...tree right next to it, which will run down so that that tree is going to be the invasive, uh, we needed to come off. And there were two things we need to do in order to maintain this tree. Because it is doing quite well.
So they're planning to come back to us hopefully.
And you make sure.
Well, we're going to give a draft decision. And the decision would be that we get information from Steve Fogg before we review that draft decision.
But I would also like to end with the electrical pole nearby being moved, which was the original plan along with removing the tree. Because one less impediment for the power means that there's a better chance that they will at least either hand shovel or do a recommended current tree. So I think that should still be part of this.
Uh, I don't, just as a recommendation.
Yeah, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, I mean, we could recommend it. We can't stipulate it.
Sure.
Because it is not just that one tree. It goes unleft from that tree to beyond.
Usually.
Yeah. It's a big stretch.
Okay, so we'll continue this until what date?
11th.
11th of July. Okay. We'll review the decision and hopefully Steve Fogg will come back.
Yeah.
With his comments. And I'm not clear, you've, the dead tree that's next to this one, is that actually in the right of way?
No.
I don't know.
How you listen to it. Whether that's conservation or what.
Um, we can probably find that out pretty easily by looking at the tree inventory in GIS.
If it's in the right of way, we should include it as part of our decisions.
Okay.
To remove that one from the sand. If it isn't in the right of way, then it's going to be a recommendation that whoever, uh, owns the property that tree is on should.
It might be that, yeah.
It's conservation.
Yeah.
Okay, so the Concom would be responsible if it's not in the right of way.
It never starts with the, it's fair enough to go.
Yeah. So we can pass that recommendation along to Concom. Because that one is so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Did Nina write a letter?
Pardon?
Did Nina write you a letter?
No.
Oh.
No.
She mentioned she would try to contact, um, Everstors about the tree, the dead tree.
Oh, okay.
She was just gonna plug in there here.
Okay.
About the dead one.
Good. All right.
The one tree we want to cut down.
I know, exactly.
Okay, so I think we're ready. Unless, if there are any other comments on the tree removal?
I'd say thank you for coming up to. Yeah, thank you.
Is that a form of that note in here?
You're welcome.
Is it?
That's a case for pictures.
Okay.
Pictures, right, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
It's a lot healthier than it was.
Yes, exactly.
Or we liked your dog.
Yes, yes. Could we do 415 Concord next since Kathy has that one just, uh?
Sure. 415, we can start.
That's okay. I'm gonna stand here.
All right, so 415 Concord, this is amendment to site plan approval to bill, rebuild the carriage house. Are you, uh, are you presenting the presentation?
Hi, I'm making the presentation.
All right. Just introduce yourself, please.
Michael Collins, I'm the architect on the larger and total project at 415 Concord. This is the smallest and third outbuilding on the property, which is right here in the existing site plan. Concord Road, Drive. This is the big barn, the small carriage house, new house garden. And that shows a little better without all the topography. This is the former tennis court, uh, former home pool, carriage house, barn. The proposal that we were before, you went previously was obviously to demolish and rebuild the house grounds and to renovate this barn and to relocate this barn, this, we refer to it as a carriage house, to a two bay sort of shed. And this is the existing drawings of that shed. It's a wood framed, wood roof, fairly utilitarian agricultural building. So the proposal was in fact to move it, put a new foundation underneath it, and rotate it about 25 feet to square off and create a courtyard with a large barn. Estimates to lift it and move it and put it on a foundation were about the same as to rebuild it. So the proposal is in fact to rebuild it exactly as it existed or exactly as it was approved. This is, this is what the elevation looked like on the approved submission. Simply getting rid of this, uh, sort of residential overhead door, adding a pair of carriage doors, and, and build it all new, same materials, same scale, same trim, so that it now sits on a new foundation. We've got new framing, uh, a new roof frame plan, slide on grade, again, just, whoops, just same footprint, same, same design as, as previously. And that's, that's the, all four elevations. And that's really the extent of our request. Nothing else changed in terms of footprint location. It's really just instead of trying to cobble together this sort of rickety wood frame or reconstructing.
Can you change this in the lighting?
Nope. All the lighting that we have proposed, the whole.
Comments?
I think it's fine.
Only for you now.
Okay.
No.
He's been taking Spanish. Any comments from the audience? No. In that case, I think this is a memorandum. We're just, somebody just would make a motion that we accept this without any comments or changes. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all done?
Thank you so much for tuning in. Good night.
Good night.
Got a chance to fill out. Okay, so before Kathy leaves, I just want to comment that Kathy is moving on from us and is going to focus on her private historical consulting. So I just wanted to thank her for her time here and the good work she's done. It's always been very professional, very thorough, and I always like to count on her to do a good job. So, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Make new friends and people.
Good luck to you. So nice. All right, we're ready to start, uh, the review of changes at 20 Riverside Road for Liberty Mutual to expand the parking area and close off the way I want to the turn.
If you want to, if you want to use these, we have, I have all you set me up right now, so.
All right.
If we could just, a few ground rules first. If you could try to hold your presentation to 15, 20 minutes? Think that's possible?
Oh, yes.
Okay, then we can open the discussion up to the planning board and our consultants and then to the audience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody else wants to say anything? Do you want me to introduce everybody here?
Sure.
All right, I'm Kathy from Raydron, who's on the project. Kristen.
Rivera.
From River Neutral, you're in River Mutual. Frank Lutwin from Golden Stores. Rory Black is our landscaping architect. Raytown, and Ganesh Sundar from Acon, who's the traffic engineer on the project.
Is, do you know if Bob Michell is coming tonight or?
Bob is not coming tonight.
Okay.
But he did give us a comment letter.
Yeah, I know. Are you going to be introducing the comment letter?
Yes.
Are you going to be going through the points that you raised in this comment letter?
Yeah, okay, yeah. And you guys have received a comment letter, right?
Yes.
We've received it today, so.
Yep.
All right, so this is the existing facility. It is located at the end of Riverside Road, on North Side Riverside Road. It is bounded to the north by the Mass Turnpike to the east for every 1.8. The existing facility is 8,000, 8,000 square foot building. It's got two access drives off of Riverside Road. The journey of parking is on the east side of the facility and there's some parking in the north. The site also has this abandoned access road, which wasn't serviced until last October, I believe, when they completed the Old Evolution Project. So the access from the Mass Bike has been terminated, so that was just as vacant. This area to the west of the site is where the Old Hill Plaza Building was located here. This new bring and park area here are for the Mass DOT, this communication building and the lock and transformer that have remained on that site. There is existing lighting in the existing parking lot, and then there's an existing detention basin back in this corner. All right, so this is the proposed site plan. Again, the two existing drives, Upper Side Road, are not being impacted at all. We're expanding the parking along the north side. We're pushing, there's a single row of parking in a travel lane. We're going to push that to the north, to the area of the old ramp, which is the station. And we're going to have two, two base parking, and then we're going to extend that down to the east. We're going to put it into where the existing detention basin is. We're going to put in an underground storage system that also has infiltration part of it. The electric control structure remains as is. And there's an inlet over this facility, which will remain also. You can see here, the trees that are shaded, so this quagmire, those existing trees to remain, so we're going to keep as many as we can on the perimeter here. And these are clearly substantial in this area that we're going to keep. The rest of these are all new proposed trees. So the new parking areas, second parking area is this area over here, which is owned by Mass DOT currently. The control is going to lease this land. The exact limits of this land haven't been determined yet. It's a property of only 35,000, sort of heat. So this will be also an underground storage basin here for this reward. The overflow of that will connect into the closed drainage system into the system that's going to be in this location. And it's the same drainage pattern that it is now. Currently, there are a couple of head walls here and we're going to have closed drainage system onto the neutral parking and into the detention basin. The lighting is going to match the existing lighting. It'll be the same picture that's up there right now. The existing facility has, currently the, has an average foot handle of 1.6, with a maximum foot handle of 4.3. The new parking areas and then this new lot on the west side here will also have an average of 1.6 foot handle with a maximum of 3.1 foot handle. So the max one's a little lower than what's existing up there with the average that is up there. So going to landscaping here, there are 37 existing trees created in this extension that are going to be removed as part of the project. We're proposing to plant over 100 new trees to replace them. The new trees are native to this area. And then the trees that are on this edge, it turns like here, will be tolerant.
So what kind of trees are they?
It's a mix of pitch pine and some color orange spruce.
So what about the deciduous ones?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just meant for the egg. Yeah, we have a, we actually, if you can switch through, we do have a photograph of the, all the plants on the site right here. So this is, this is all the plants. It's a mixture of red maples, some service berry, pin oaks, hot thorns, red twig doglins, a couple different colors.
What sizes?
Uh, for the proposed sizes going in, we have, uh, it's a mix of different sizes. We have, all of the deciduous trees are two to two and a half inch calipers, as well as the ornament trees are about the same size. The color orange spruce is a 10, white pines are 12 to 14 for installation, the pitch pines are a 8 to 10, and the deciduous white pine is a 10. And then the shrubs, we've specified a 5 gallon.
All right, so these are just photos of the existing facility. Again, this is the existing facility here. This is a picture of the existing parking lot looking to the west. You can see that there is an existing ramp and a ramp that's right over here. Again, this is another picture of the north side. Again, looking to the west, you can see more of that existing ramp right here. This is the north side of the site looking to the east. This is the existing building here, the ramp over on the side and the detention basin. Here is a picture of the existing ramp. Looking to the west, existing building is there, and this is the existing parking. We're going to push that existing parking over in this direction. And this call is being cleared. This is a picture of the existing detention basin looking to the east. So this will be rolled in, maybe a bay of parking in this area with the underground stormwater detention and a discharge area here. This is a picture of the vacant passageway lot in the east that they have built on there. And another picture of the vacant lot, the existing building off of that. This is from the vacant lot moving towards the building across the street from the South Side Riverside Road. So we're looking sort of down the south east direction, down Riverside Road. We're going to be located on the left side. Another picture with the East Riverside Road, and then this one is looking to the west, Hundred Side Road towards parks. And then this is a distinct picture, and that'll be what we have in the parking areas These are just a few, um, a couple of cross sections that we drew over this, over here through the, the parking area and where you can see right there. Stormwater is, is this one right here. So you can see the existing ground is here, proposed ground is here. So pushing everything to the north. The limit disturbance is less than 10 feet off the existing edge of ground. So this whole area will be landscaping. This is the parking area. And then this one's a little further down when we get closer to the existing grade. Again, this is landscaping area here, this is the parking, this area in here. We are adding quite a bit of fill to the site mainly because we are filling the detention basin in the back area here. Fill in this area here. And then there's a slight depression here where the existing head walls are. So these two areas are getting filled in so that it'll basically align with the existing
So just, this is just for my clarification. Have you used, say, storage facility underground? So they are all infiltration units, it's storage facilities and then they direct to an infiltration, makes sense?
No, the bottom of the basins are, the structures are open, so the infiltrate, they go in, they infiltrate, and if they need to fill up.
They're all, they're all infiltration.
They're all infiltration, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're going to do something really neat, squirt the water, have a pump and use the rainwater.
All infiltration, and then if they miss capacity, then they'll help.
Okay. And it outputs to another tank rather than daylight?
It goes.
There's an outlet.
To 128, right? And then goes like a swale along 128.
Swale along 128, yeah.
And then they.
Eventually to the roof?
Uh, eventually, but they, this Mass DOT has been putting in the big stormwater controls on our side, so I think that one runs down. They built a lot of those before, and I don't, you know, I'll get over there eventually probably. I'm not sure.
But you're.
Yeah, yeah, they, that's the purpose of all that work, they've been doing over the years, and like our new site, it's fixing a lot of stormwater controls.
So from this proposed parking area over there on the west, we are proposing some stairs here and then crosswalk for the main entrance. Again, kept parking for this thing that's located back here. We are adding one additional handicap spot, so we meet the main guidelines, but there we know it's definitely parking up in this vicinity, so we're just proposing stairs down to the main entrance.
So where do all the cars here that are parked in the new parking lots park now?
I'm sorry, say it again.
All the cars that are already parked in the new parking lots, where do they park now?
They park in.
Yeah, so we don't necessarily have an immediate need. It's really more from a planning perspective as we think about what today's office environment needs from a number of cars based on our, we're also looking at the occupancy of the building as well.
Yeah, so part of this request is they want to increase the head count that they have in the development agreement from, give me the numbers, it's up to 400 or so, right?
280, about 200.
And now we're going to 316.
I think it went to 400 at some places.
Employees, you're taking employees.
Oh, 400, 433, that's right, yeah.
And the number of parking spaces or compliance zoning, 3,000 or whatever?
Yes, actually, it's, it's more than required. There are 280 required for a building, and we're proposing 276 for a building.
And they go 280 now, or that's, no, they're starting 44 now. So you're proposing to go to 376, but you only require 280 even if you increase your head count?
Right.
If you're not going to do any.
But what is calc? You guys correctly, Rob, you have some sort of, with the town, right? The beyond zoning.
Right, there's a, there's a cap on occupancy and.
Related to parking.
Well, a couple of questions. This, this is a site plan review process, but does it dovetail into a development agreement and special permit?
Yes, yeah.
And the development agreement and special permit are under the auspices of the zoning Board of Appeals?
Zoning Board of Appeals, that development agreement is the select.
And the select. So what we would be doing is writing recommendations?
Well, you would still grant site plan approval. Site plan, it's a site plan approval with special permit, so you would have to grant your site plan approval, and that would basically, I think those would carry over to the recommendations to the ZVA.
I see.
And to the select.
But in West of the, the building inspector is the arbiter of parking typically?
Yes.
Um, I'm just thinking that in doing the calculations for the number of parking spaces required, was there consideration for traffic demand management amelioration, and where does that stand?
Yeah, yeah. Right now, this particular site has extensive traffic demand management program. I think they have a service that takes employees from the computer station and from the rewind stations and from the site. They do have bicycle racks, employee showers, and flexible working schedules, so they do have an extensive traffic demand management program. And the idea is for, in the future, the employees would be encouraged to make use of the program, and Liberty Visual is also willing to enhance. They already have an extensive traffic demand management program. So this, this, the number of parking spaces did take into account the existing power demand management program, and also takes it up on like the future enhancements that we're.
So you're looking for approximately somewhere between 40 and 50% more cars than our zoning file requires, even with the traffic demand management policy?
I think we more or less look like, looked at the existing number of parking spaces, which was 244, for existing employee gap of 28 employees on the site, which roughly turns out to be around a ratio of 0.8 spaces per employee. And so we are trying to provide the same ratio in the future as well. So the proposed number of parking spaces is 376 for a future employee gap of 433 employees, and that turns out to be around like 0.85 spaces per employee, which is a 90:30 ratio that exists here on the site. So that, that was the thought process behind providing 376 spaces. And also, I mean, we didn't get the comment from MDM saying this particular site would need additional parking spaces based on ITD, which is the Institute of Cross Generation and Media's parking generation manual. And they actually say that we need to provide 10% more than what's required. So that's why we wanted to maximize the number of parking spaces on this site.
In my, in our very productive discussions with the Boston property, when they were seeking and still seeking to increase their office space and parking lots and so on, we started to get serious about what I call best practices around this traffic demand management. They talked about van service, their own van service with wireless, you know, built into the vans going east and west and going north and south. And they talked about some of the other things they talked about. We began to structure this, and it's a great opportunity for us.
I, I absolutely think we should, you know.
And determine our own best practices. I don't know that you can tie, but we can tie a decision to, to, to all best practices that we determine, or whether something the selectmen would do.
So.
But I feel like we can't. It would be good if we just didn't say, yeah, more parking spaces, that's fine and Dan, add more traffic, because that's trying to mitigate the impact of.
Yeah, I agree. One of the things we discussed early on was what was, what kind of traffic demand management programs that they had in place and what would be enhanced. We didn't talk about your shovel services, so that's kind of new information that we didn't have. But to, to know those details, what you'd have in place and what, you know, what are you willing to do further beyond that to enhance it, that would be helpful information to have in crafting a decision and crafting recommendations and stuff.
When are you planning to do this densification of, you know, increasing the number of people in the building?
Um, I, I don't think we've actually worked through that yet, to be honest with you. We're still trying to work through the process. This really started as we were working with Mass Doc three years ago when they came, said they were taking our land, so.
Do, do you have a documented TDN plan or?
Yes.
Of an F, right?
Yes.
That'd be great to see.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I know we put it in whatever we gave the, have consultants.
Yeah, we have those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like your policies have been your capabilities to do that.
I mean, with all the nonpurposed paving that you're adding, it just seems like you're, if the cart before the horse, you're not sure whether or not necessarily you're going to be adding more employees and when it's going to be happening, and it seems to be bucking all the trends, which is to have fewer people want to drive, and I, I'm always hearing about how parking garages or parking lots in suburban office buildings are not full. And it just, I don't know, I just question, it seems premature to me. And it just, I don't know, I just question, it seems premature to me. You know, if you were in the process of actually planning to intensify your building.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I mean, we're planning, I think we're answering the question of the when. Liberty certainly is committed to increasing, you know, the whole purpose of this is to increase the capacity in terms of the headcount and the parking that goes with it. So it's not a matter of not knowing what Liberty's doing, but the whole purpose of this exercise is to, to look at how we can optimize the use of the building because it doesn't meet the needs of a 21st century workforce in terms of the way that our people work, the way that they travel to work, how they, how they work. People have off schedules, there's no rigid nine to five work day anymore. Our employees are coming and going at different times, which is actually helpful because it sort of means some of the traffic stresses are less than they might have been in a traditional commuting routine. But the, the only question on the timing is we, we're going to go through this process, then we're going to go through the site plan approval and we're going to go through the special permit process. And then we have to modify the development agreement with the selectmen. And then we have to finalize everything with Mastock as well. So our only question on timing is just how long all of that process is going to take. It's not, it's not a matter of whether we're committed to fulfilling the process.
Are you looking at a maximum of four hundred people?
Four thirty-three.
Four thirty-three.
So what we did is we looked at, so the two hundred and eighty person cap in today's environment is pretty unusual. I mean, normally if you think about like a hundred and eighty square feet per person, that was our logic around what we think it should be in today's environment. And so that's how we approached the number of employees. And then with the amount of land that Mastock had to give us for use, that's how we arrived at the parking.
And so I guess, are you maximizing the amount of parking that you can fit on that lot? Or is it based on the fact that you're going to have four hundred and thirty-three people? There's going to be traffic demand management. Not everyone is going to be working the same hours. I mean, how much studying have you done to determine that you need three hundred and seventy-five spaces? Because it seems really high to me relative to four hundred and thirty-three employees who don't all work at the same time and don't all necessarily drive.
But I think there are times where you need more because Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So we struggle with this just in our regular work environment, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but that seemed to be more full. Monday and Friday, not so much. So we need to build, so we, we looked at it both ways, both from, you know, what, what's the most we could get out of the lot? We actually thought we were going after about a hundred and turned out to be seven or something. And what we found is when we are fairly full and we, you know, we have vendors, we have security guards, we have food service, we keep that eighty, what was that number, one point eight?
Spaces per employee. Right now, we have point eight, twenty-three.
I mean, that seems to be what our history has been in our other locations. So we looked at it both ways, I guess.
How many cars total are you planning to park? Is it a couple of them?
Three.
Three seventy-six, so it's almost one car per employee, even though the work, the times are staggered, the days are staggered. And there's a number of them are not coming, presumably by private automobile. Just, I, I don't see them match. I mean, it seems like there might be some room to move there. And, you know, I'm looking at the, if a new parking lot along Riverside Road, it's, it's just pretty much asphalted over. There's some trees around the perimeter. By the way, with a curb cut right next to another driveway curb cut, interesting.
That's, that's what we can really, or the Mass DOT, right, with us.
Yeah, but that's a smart lot, it's a lot of cars.
Yeah, so are all numbers, are all ratios, right, that they refer to? How old are they?
I don't know that the thousand, the three per thousand was.
Yeah, right. Whatever the numbers are, whatever the ratios are, they'd say X many employees require Y many parking spaces. It seems like we should be modernizing that. It seems like, you know, taking into account best practices they're talking about. And today's work environment and all that sort of thing.
Yeah.
The answer should end up being obvious. We shouldn't be debating over, you know, how must they build this way and then have to be different. It seems like it should be a common point of view.
I also think that just saying additional ten percent or whatever the number is, it's sort of like a catchall number instead of something which would be based on best practices or actual experience or something. I agree with you, Tony. And I can understand how, you know, when this building was built, you know, originally there were a lot more offices and now there's a lot more open office space and a lot of desks and your headcount is increasing. The question is, is this the right number of parking spaces to match the building? And predicated on what Tony was talking about, ultimate transportation and shift, you know, changes. I think we might just have to look at those numbers a little more carefully. And we do have a traffic engineer, right? Who's taken a look at this?
Yeah.
And his comments?
His comments are much more related to what's going to happen with the cars going out of the site. Yeah, rather than the number. He took the number of employees as a given.
Okay.
Just one more comment. Have you thought about possibly phasing the additional parking rather than doing it all at once to see if you were in the really beginning up to like doing the parking at the top first, let's say, and then try and go?
You know, I suppose it's something we could think of. I mean, frankly, we've just been trying to work with Mastock and kind of square away something that we've been working on for the last three years and have some agreement and be done with them, to be honest with you. It's certainly something we can look at. I'm not sure what, how that would work. I guess I would be wondering what your, would we come back here or just, I guess I'm just wondering what that would sound like.
Some of it relates to where your detention.
Yeah.
If that's all right, because I don't know how you would do this in phases if you're going to.
Oh, I guess I was thinking you would just open the new lot of places. Is that what you were suggesting?
But it ties in.
Well, probably build the top right parking in one phase and then the triangular section in another phase.
So the idea would be not to have a constant construction area as employees committing, you know, give us the, you know, the employees, I mean, and a constant construction.
I mean, I think we should be able to, if we agree with the new headcount, come to some kind of an understanding of what the number of parking spaces would be in this new, modern era. Whether it means checking, you know, within traffic standards, checking with our traffic consultant, checking our own bylaws. Because unfortunately or fortunately, we normally don't get something of your magnitude, you know, of a parking lot or, you know, large, this large building, this large, uh, parking.
I don't know, we've been dealing with Boston property.
I know, I was trying to avoid that for a minute.
No, but I mean, that's a similar.
All right, well, then I think, you know, the question is, are those parameters and guidelines used for Boston properties applicable here? And if so, should we apply them?
Well, it's the same. It's synonymous in terms of their timeframe. That is, we're talking about the days requirements for office space. And we're talking about actually probably a similar size, especially if you consider the hose of new office space in Boston properties.
Can you describe where that is, sorry?
Three twenty and one twenty-eight.
Yeah, across the, that you don't, you got, Boston is the broken state, so. I mean, the, the good thing here is, this is an existing facility. We've been operating it for fifteen years. We've got a pretty good sense of what, what the needs are as well as from Liberty's other facilities that Joanne referred to. So I think we're, we're pretty confident that we've got real time data of what, what the needs are and what the operations are going forward. You know, it's not based on study, it's actually based on some real.
Well, he mentioned ITE, which, which we found is not necessarily synonymous with, with demands in this particular area. So it's a, it's a basic standard that, that most people start with, but it's also not necessarily accurate with respect to particular locations.
Yeah, but the, the point is just, the number was something that we, we came up with based on our experience of operating this building as well as some other facilities. It wasn't, it wasn't based on performance, it was actually based on the demand, so the, the operations of the building.
So I'll, I'll raise my hand to have a session with him on you guys to actually look through all the numbers and study the mitigation and, you know, come up with what we think is a modern type number. And what you have right now might be a modern type number. I just, I don't see a chart up there. We're talking, I don't see a chart of, you know, number of employees, network spaces, you know, you know, based on old standards. And then the new best practices put in place, how that would use the parking or here's our name. That'd be, that'd be the kind of thing I'd look for. Maybe you have it already, we should see.
I mean, we, we, again, as I said before, we looked at the existing number of parking spaces for, for existing capital of waiting. And we wanted to keep the ratios similar to what's on there for the future years. So the existing need was point eight spaces per employee and we, we kept it along the same ratios. And based on the comments we received from the peer reviewer, I mean, he said that we, this lot actually needs four hundred parking spaces and we are actually providing less than that. So that was his initial comment, that we are not providing what ITE recommends us to provide for this parking lot. And he said, because of the daily measures that's, that's being employed at the site, you wouldn't need the four hundred parking spaces. It would be something less than that. And even his recent comment today actually says that, if I, if I'm just reading his comments, he says, he says that applicants should identify that potential reserve parking may be provided if this.
You're not going to read it, no.
No, I don't.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it can't.
At any rate, I, we were at this point with Boston property, very good discussion with Boston property. And then we had discussions of different mitigation and a number came down. They were convinced the number came down. So we have that opportunity here, you guys want to take that opportunity, I'm offering it. That's what's important, obviously.
As long as we're bringing our, our traffic consultant into the discussion right now, maybe this is a good time to go over all of his recommendations.
Okay.
I mean, does he really say in here anywhere that it should, that the spaces should be four hundred?
So. Not, not the latest one, but the initial, the very first set of comments.
Three minutes.
The response is that these are the space of private people with the.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah. So his largest recommendations in here, he gave us basically two. One, he recommended a road safety audit for the South Avenue corridor in the vicinity of the one twenty-eight grand because it's a bicycle crash cluster. So it would take further study of a road safety audit and then safety implementation measures would follow from that. Lengthening the turn lanes on Riverside Road from sixty feet to one hundred feet. And flare widening rather than full turn lane to allow bypass turning vehicles within the public way of the town and Mass DOT property along Park Road at I ninety. That does back up, I experienced that that morning. And concept plan showing improved markings at the I ninety westbound off ramp and a do not block the box marking at South Street. No, that was, that was the recommendation.
All right.
Put this up to the responses to the initial.
Yeah, I mean, what, what was, what was his scope of work?
His scope of work was basically to peer review their initial traffic study, you know, at the standard way he reviews it. You know, is it done with in conformance with the standard? With, you know, with industry standards, does he agree with their, that their findings look correct? He had a few modeling differences that he wanted them to look at first. You know, some basis numbers off of, I believe they used a standard ITE trip generation, but they were more updated audited numbers that he asked to be put in. Those conclusions escaped largely the same, so he asked for that kind of sensitivity analysis.
Yeah.
He got the responses to that and then this is the response back of it today.
So off-site impact, impact?
Yes, yeah.
He wasn't, he didn't look at things like TDM standards and that kind of?
No.
Even though you think that that would be part of the impact analysis.
We did provide that.
We did, yeah.
Management, but I'm not sure length of the level.
He does mention in his last paragraph that assuming you're implementing a TDM program on the campus and the end of space of three hundred and seventy-six space supply will be added to our company demands. So he, he did review, yeah, I assume.
That was part of the submissions. It sounded like the comment dropped off from the first to the second. So. So TD's one, that would be the first one, he said four thirty-three is our forward one, four hundred and forty-five.
Yeah, just based on general opinion.
Yeah, which isn't, you know, that's the one that's, and then you move it down from there.
It's the blanket, yeah.
You know, prove to me you got the, you know, that you guys are working, you know, flood, you know, that's not, it's not a no, right? You don't have a seven to three and working, working exact hours. But maybe, maybe just, because, yeah, my guess is he's already had those thoughts, is just include anything that, like sit down and work through, like where all those numbers are. What's the more possible, just out of curiosity, maybe as a, same with.
We wound up at, what do we wind up at? Remember?
Yeah, I don't remember either.
I think it was under three.
Oh, I was going to think I just. Oh, the three per thousand, yeah. It was definitely, it was under that. We were going to have them go well under that because their lot is, their lot doesn't hit eighty-five percent, as I understand. They've done it too close.
No, it's, it's the vacant, it's the huge parking areas with, with, you know, that are about forty to sixty percent.
They have a basketball hoop out there.
Yeah, I mean.
One thing that I think is good is that, as I understand, is Liberty Mutual is bringing the data from other office areas to the discussion. So if you take a look at your shifts and everything else, your people and how many spaces. So they have some historical data which could be useful to back up the numbers one way or the other. And then we can take a look at the Boston property side and see how they mesh or don't mesh. I think that discussion, Tony's suggestion would be helpful to the planning board so that if we need to open our eyes, I'm in a little teaching here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't sense a wave of enthusiasm about that discussion, but it would be helpful for us. We're trying to get, we're trying to get comfortable with the, with the data that we're hearing. It was, it's not that we don't believe you, we just need to get more into it to be sure that this is something that we can enthusiastically support.
So I'd just like to know what you'd want in advance so we can figure out. I'm not sure what we have and what I have to add for your question.
So I think starting with that would be if you have looked at other, you know, your other sites, you know, what are, what are you hitting at your other sites? What are the operations at those other sites and how would they measure up to what you proposed for this site? I mean, I don't presume to know how your business is broken down, but let's say an example like, one site is all accountants. You know, so, and at that site there are two hundred people and it, and that one runs at point eight. Another site might be all your call center, so that's twenty-four hours. You know, it might be different than what you proposed at this site. And that site runs at like one per. You know, I, I don't know, what are your TDMs at those, at those various sites? You know, where are they? Because that's going to affect, you know, how you can get a, you have pretty easy access to Riverside from, from this site. You wonder if your other sites might be much more remote.
I think if you frame the problem of Bob, like they'll, they'll be able to frame back like what you would ask for.
Sure.
I don't think it's going to be a new day that we're going to have.
Yeah.
I think it's selecting it in two, one shape, one chart, so we just can take.
Yeah, happy to do it. I mean, just so we're clear, Bob had been, as we mentioned, he had been suggesting we didn't have enough parking. He was concerned that we, we were under parked rather than over parked and we were trying to.
We were trying to be responsive to that concern as he expressed it, so.
Yeah. It's entirely possible. Again, it's not that we don't believe you, we just wanna get more comfortable with the, with your process and what you need.
With the League of Women Voters discussion the other day when they had candidates trying working issue taking up, I wanted to give something about this dark traffic. And Chris Houston, who's our selectman, wonderful selectman, he said, I wish I could, you know, and he didn't have any great ideas at that point. And my thought is that, hey, when we add the office space, when we add new employees, we do everything we can to establish best practices to minimize traffic as much as possible. Not minimize the employees, but minimize the traffic as much as possible. And thereby reduce the failure time, you know, that we see on the road. So I think we should give it a shot, you know, to understand it a little better.
I was, just as an example, the other day, I was at the corner of 420 and School Street driving east and it took me almost 45 minutes to go a half a mile. I mean, this is a pass through town and with limited road capacity. And in the morning and evening during the rush hour, it's just, it is good luck. Absolutely good luck. So that's, that's what, that's what we're, that's why we're trying not to bring more cars into town on the town roads if we can possibly help it.
Or stagger them.
Yeah, whatever we can to minimize that, any further major impact on that. So we're looking at the addition of, you know, 100 or so, whatever it was, 87 or whatever it was, new cars parking here, that's just one more load the town has to live with, so that's all.
And what were my thoughts? And I think that's part of the discussion on the traffic impacts because we're so insensitive.
And to do it in moderation because it's good for your employees too. Their way to, to your employees and their traffic.
So having said that, maybe Emi, you could orchestrate some sort of a meeting, get some information, suggestions from Bob and sit down and have that discussion. I think it's one discussion, don't you?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Like an email asking maybe the comment for maybe.
Continue the hearing until the, what, the 11th?
I think 11th is a little bit of short lead time to do that. I think, I mean, I know if we go the 25th then we're carrying over into September, but to get this all together, I think a month is a more comfortable space to do that. Yeah.
All right, well, I'll leave that up to you. Let's say the, let's say the, what's the next meeting after the 11th?
25th.
Okay.
Your permits that you have to achieve, the agreement you have to achieve with town and cereal, right? You can have other things running parallel.
No, I think we have to finish with you first. And that's why part of our goal would be to, you know, be working with the selection in the fall.
Yeah, get the parking lot approved first.
Right. All right, so that's what we'll do.
Go back to the other one.
What is it for?
This line here? The existing parking that they just.
Yeah, that's with the existing parking lot.
End of that.
End of that.
Is existing.
Is the existing parking lot.
So roads moving.
To the north.
Great, okay, thank you.
We'd be happy to expedite things to make the 11th if that works, you and Jessica. But of course, I'm happy to.
Perhaps Emi is thinking more of his own.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Pretty busy.
I'll just, that's, that's fine. Thanks, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that's.
Yeah.
See you guys next week.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, let's see, Sunday Woods. What we'll do is open the hearing and immediately continue. So I'm opening the hearing, somebody want to make a motion to continue to what date?
Now when we will continue to July 11th, we will have another site walk on June 26th at 9:00.
Okay, so we continue until July the 11th?
Salute.
A second. Oh, a favor?
All right.
So just a quick question, do we have two sidewalks on the 26th?
Yes, we do.
One of 4 Meadow Brook?
One of 4 Meadow Brook, yeah.
So which one's first?
One of 4 Meadow Brook. Since we've already seen three Sunday Woods, we're gonna see the new layups they propose. On Sunday Woods.
So do we, is it nine or three?
Nine.
What's this?
85 chestnuts, which is the next thing we have. What I would like to do with this is, this just came in today, 85 chestnuts, they're proposing, this is site plan number, site plan approval amendment where they want to take down this large maple tree here. We have had an arborist look at it, I don't have a formal report yet, but I have talked to him about it. However, they haven't gotten to me, the applicants haven't gotten to me a detailed plan for what they plan to replace it with yet. And just having about this today, Kim hasn't even had a chance to look at this, so. This, I'd also like to continue to the 25th. Particularly because I think when it is complete, we can handle this with a memo, so that wouldn't be a carryover.
Okay.
And, you know, I think the 11th is crowded enough already.
All right. Somebody move to continue to the 25th of July?
Second.
Oh, a favor?
Hi.
Good. Moving on to decisions.
423 New Street? 123. Is her up here?
Yeah.
Nice question, will I wait or anybody?
No, go ahead.
Might I talk to you with something about the existing trees on the neighbor's property? The big concrete trees and special fencing to keep those protected?
There is.
I don't know, it's more the plate, are they really special or?
There are a couple of old trees that were, the limbs, he was concerned about the limbs.
There was concern about the limbs and I think the way that was gonna be handled was was the standard condition that have Kim on site for placement to avoid cutting the limbs as much as possible.
It's a standard condition.
I believe it says. Something in the special conditions about consulting with the butter.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Is in the butter over there.
Appendix F is where I saw myself.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have something stronger than that because it is a real concern? In special conditions?
What were you thinking stronger than that?
One, wait a second, I'm looking for the.
Number one.
There we are. Pretty strong. There's only two large. Is it only the two large trees or are there others?
There are multiple trees.
Okay, and I guess we can cover by as well as tree hot for along the property line.
Yeah, that's the way the fencing would go.
Okay.
Certified offers every nine months?
Yeah, I'm questioning that. Shouldn't that be like three or six months?
Nine months was what was proposed by their landscape architect? Did Kim review that and was okay with it?
I mean, construction may take nine months.
Yeah, it'll be all. They'll do one inspection. I think we, what we started with was six to nine months and they went nine and Kim reviewed it. We can, six is okay.
Six feels better for me, but.
Yeah, I'll bet two.
And we have some kind of an initial report what kind of shape there is based on comparison?
So no, I don't think we have an initial report for what they are now.
Should we?
The trees as they stand now, I mean, I think the assumption right now is that the trees are healthy. They have been, you know, nothing has happened.
There's no baseline.
There's no baseline, yeah. So, I mean, I can see the logic in that for sure.
But it'd just be a series of photographs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So F2, special condition, I'm finding confusing because you're talking about West property line, which is the one way in the back beyond the wetlands and the westerly of butter.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So you're talking about the one at the bottom left of this would be West.
Okay, so this is, okay, so how about we just say?
Is that what you mean?
No, we mean here.
If you refer to North.
North.
I mean, you talked about Northwest.
See the North or Northeast?
So what are you talking about, which?
We're talking about this property line here.
Okay, well then, would you refer to that as Northwest in item 1B?
Is it shared property with whatever the name.
Yeah, that's what I think we should say, common property line with.
With.
With whatever number it is. What number are you?
125.
125.
And then, okay, and instead of westerly or butter, you'll just say 125. Let's see, so western, you pointed at the front side. And then again in 1F, that refers to the westerly property line, so we'll say 125. And then on the next page, six, item number six needs a C for the finding. And then.
Where are we?
Page six.
Page six.
Page six, item six needs a C. And then item 11, you're talking about proposing your construction conformance to setback. But then when you look at the condition at four, you're talking about ridge height, not setback.
Okay.
So which one is it? There's a boat.
It is, it is ridge height.
Okay, so then you need to change that in item 11.
Just back in item four.
And that's it.
Do I have comments?
Okay.
Under 1G.
1G.
Page five. It seems to me that the, what you're talking about the existing stone wall, the front is not to be, it's not part of the approval, it should be maintained as is, et cetera. Isn't that a condition?
I would say, I would say no because it's, because it's basically saying that it's out of the scope of this project, that that would, since it's in the right of way.
When you're saying if that changes though, it requires this review?
It requires another permit, yeah, yeah.
That's not a condition, that's just an advisory, is that your feeling?
That is, that is my, yes, that is my feeling. I mean, I don't feel hugely strongly about it or putting it in the conditions.
I was just curious. Okay, so you're just advising them that they would have to do that?
Yes, yes, yeah, should they want to come in and change that law.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell them, is the way this is set up now, if they want to go back and check things and need to be checked, they're completed, you go just to appendix F for special conditions?
No.
No, okay, because I wasn't sure if the new organization was set up that way. So you had a sort of a short summary of what appendix F.
No.
Okay, so you still, so you still have to go through?
Yeah, so you, we look at the ones prior to occupancy and the big ones are usually landscape inspection, make sure that they're all in.
Ones that are specifically this particular project.
To know if it's a short head, have to go back and see whether or not the stone wall would require an additional looksay. Okay, good, getting clarity.
Cool.
Five years from now we'll have it.
They'll be faster than us.
I do appreciate Al's talking about that in D though, because it's sort of such an afterthought that it would be easy for youngers to misunderstand. Right, so it's almost like it should be in its.
Molder.
In its own little, I don't know, what it would have done to understand it's a criteria. This little thing here kind of gets buried and that's really important because it would be so easy to misunderstand that if you've been through site review, you thought, stone wall.
You could make it, yeah.
You already have a CC there, that could be.
Please note.
This could be F2 and F3.
Yeah.
Yeah, just something that, you know, just to take it out because it's really buried in here and you wouldn't want to accidentally.
Let us. Let us, yeah.
I think it's the first way to do it.
Is it just battered?
You feel strongly one way or the other.
Yeah, I can, I'm fine with it.
So, we ready?
Yeah.
I would like to move to be approved, the certificate of action, so we'll have a plan for the 4123 neutral street with the multiple small changes.
A second.
Hold it there.
Hi.
You had a must.
All post.
All good. Six again.
Good work. Thank you, yeah. Glad to thank the board for hearing our concerns as a butters and thank you for your time and having the...
Thank you.
Very well done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You did a great job, everyone.
Thank you for appreciating all the efforts that we did to remove it.
Yeah.
A lot of effort.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we really...
There's time here.
Oh.
I wanted to see.
We don't...
Yeah.
Well, we really do appreciate what you, what you did and that you listened.
We try to...
Yeah.
Hope we love it.
Yeah.
I hope this will be a good...
It should be.
It looks great.
My parents live close by, I just love it.
Wonderful.
All excellent. And I grew up in West, I went to the school since I was a kindergarten.
That's great, they're very true of us.
Yeah, because we didn't know how hard it was.
The house was already there.
Yeah, it was easy.
I was a planning board chairman when you grew up.
What?
I was a planning board chairman.
Thank you. It probably was, might have been out. It was.
It probably was.
He's a bad person.
So, this is fifteen Laurel?
Oh, yes.
Fifteen Laurel is the one that is basically already built, it's finishing up the garage and adding the pool house. That, it'll let's the community garden parcel in the back.
Yeah. It has like the fields by it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's...
I gotta say, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yes, page, page four, three, will draw your attention to the end of that.
Page...
Yes.
Three, seven.
Disappeared.
It disappeared.
Oh. Why did that?
I sent a copy to someone else.
No, I, I don't know what happened there. Sometimes... Sometimes my cut apiece acts weird, but it, 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 uh... It was, does not need to be constructed until the pool house is permitted.
Um, should I point everybody and tell them what they... Uh, page four, B, how about large deciduous trees or rock walk will be concerned? No more trees will be cut because at this point, he said no more trees will be cut on property. So, whether it goes there, whether it goes after the pool house, somewhere, we want to make sure he was going to move the pool forward.
The pool, yeah, the pool has been moved forward on the most recent plans.
So, when I just wanted to summarize the fact, no more trees will be cut on property. Whether it's in conjunction with the pool house or...
Yeah.
Is that a condition?
Or as a condition or however.
Well, it's, it's pretty much a standard condition because if he's not showing any more trees to be cut on the plans, those are the plans you stick to. And so, if they ever did, they would have to come in and ask for it.
And just because it's halfway through, that's why...
I can see it as well as a finding anyway. No permit, no trees on site, won't be removed.
Um, and again, I'm not sure where, if this goes under D or if this goes, it's covered under F. He has the large trees in the front, which are sort of staggered. There was a call for putting some white berdens or rhodes to use some undersored trees.
Okay.
I think that's what I recall at least.
Is that what you think?
No.
I don't think so.
Because he said rhodes and we said, yeah, but think about it, but berdens too, you know.
I don't know, he does have these, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that they...
He's got this as a...
Yeah, I thought he was wanting, okay, I thought he was going to just walk through it. If that's efficient, that's efficient. I thought they were going to be scattered, but... The details, I believe. Um, and then on number three?
Yeah.
The butter twenty-three Laurel, it's best concern that the water can, we had from fifteen Laurel?
Okay.
Which lowered us well property and down to this pines on twenty-three Laurel. Just to be clear about that. Um, and then I noticed that the changes to the grades are going to be acceptable before the, the construction permit, building permit. Is that kosher for that to be just, I don't know, I'm asking. We just check by, um...
By Dave.
Dave and, and, and John Fields?
Literally just by Dave.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think John's going to look that, say, okay, now that Dave approved it.
Yeah, then, well, basically, once, once Dave reviews that, now, he's given me the updated plan already. He gave it to me yesterday, I think. Um, I sent it off to Dave. Dave hasn't had a chance to review it yet, but once, you know, once I get the okay from Dave, along with the rest, you should satisfy that. I sign off on the building permit, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Just a question, on page three, I just, I think I'm used to seeing just sort of the height of the ridge above natural, average natural grade.
That's exactly what I was...
And I was just wondering where that was. Is that one of the TBD? No, that's TBD, every night, it's just missing.
It's the map between push to eleven and, usually you have the actual height of the ridge. And it's missing. You have, you have the elevation height.
Oh, okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, that...
And actually, the actual height is thirty-seven, which seems... Like, do we need to survey it even though it's already been grown? That's when you need to survey it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's worth coughing up against...
Okay.
If it's thirty-seven even?
It's just under, yeah, it's like thirty-six point...
That is really interesting. Because that site's almost flat.
Right.
So, that would be good to check.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
It's saying it's exactly thirty-seven feet high.
We'll add in the ridge height condition.
Where does that go?
That would go in the special condition.
We hit that before.
Where does that go in the finding?
It goes in the finding under zoning performance, the last standard.
I realize it was right on the...
I'm just wondering where it was.
No, no.
And so, because we always say, stay exactly on the... Wait, so it'll be confirmed.
Well, it's a good point.
You might get nervous about some...
Near the back of the hatch right there.
Ready to...
No, I think the reason I was concerned is because...
Just, just one comment. Like, it's similar to the, what I made in the last edition. Where you say under eight, the standard sound, yeah, standard sound limitation of forty dB will apply. I think that should, I would recommend putting in a bowl, otherwise it just gets buried in the next.
And then to the property line, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, what they do is, I'm asking, they just take a base one here and give the additions and then we have to crank on and see if there's a difference?
You can do it that way or you can do it by engineering it. Actually, you take the specifications from the generator and then you add in the sound, any sound deadening equipment you have around it, blankets, whatever, and use the STC grading to bring it down.
Okay.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for fifteen Laurel, run with modifications note.
Second.
Hold it there.
Hi.
Your post is moving on to Pigeon Hill. That's a memo, right?
That is a memo, yes.
Right here.
Can I add up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, the other thing, at the bottom of the page, the second paragraph.
Um, okay.
Planning board's civil engineer consultant satisfied that with the vegetation and grassing, having taken hold that there would not be drainage issues.
Okay, yeah.
Delete the second, uh, to the column before it, I think you just say grass, not grass.
Yes.
Okay.
There'd be not, there'd be not new drainage issues caused by the construction of the wall. Something like that.
Okay.
So, there won't be new drainage issues caused by the construction of the wall. Also, on the third paragraph down, where it talks about private remediation trees affected by the grading, can we say something like created by the initial twenty-twelve applicant? Does that...
Third one down? Oh, okay.
That was...
Oh, right, right.
That's not by the...
That was...
Right, that's by the initial twenty-twelve applicant.
It wasn't even the initial twenty-twelve applicant, it was the one before that, it was the previous owner.
Okay, so I just wanted to let them know that it's not because of this work.
Right.
By the owner prior to site plan approval.
Right, right. Um, and when it says applicant civil engineer, can we name him?
I usually don't.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I...
You could name the, um...
It could be the company, yeah.
Yeah, just because, I mean, you'd want some history.
Jilson, right.
Right, and the same thing about our consultant, I think we should...
That's actually a good point. We don't necessarily need to know in a longer form.
Yeah, because it says it on there.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah.
But in this case, there are no minutes. So, that's a good point.
Okay.
Also, it's agreed these trees would be additional, attempt to save them or whatever, and replace. Can we tell them here what size that would be? We're not going to replace the giant things one for one, so... Is that something you want them to come back and leave it at that?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to come back as, as a standard and then, um, the condition is standard. I said standard size, which for the board is ten to twelve.
Okay, that's why I'm picking up all this stuff. And then, and then this goes back along the wall where the carport is? Uh, it says trees along the wall should die to replace the trees of standard size. And then there's something about the white pine, um, the back being replaced. Isn't the white pine the one they're putting a tree well around and see whether...
No, this is...
It's that one that's in failure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looking up the hill, it's a lot of...
One more left, okay, so it's that one, all right.
And that was the one she came back with.
Yeah.
So, maybe just then throw, say, up the hill, more towards the, it has an impact on the streetscape. That was, I think, was the concern, was right?
The white pine?
The white pine that...
Just a very large mature.
Yeah.
Can you see it from Pigeon Hill?
Yeah.
You can see it from Pigeon Hill, yeah.
I just, when I read this, I think it's on the wall side rather than on the Pigeon Hill side. That's what confused me.
Okay, okay, got you.
It is.
Something about Jilson.
Yes, yeah.
Right, right, right. Right, throwing Pigeon Hill is one more is one...
But it's on, we have on site.
It's on the plan.
On site, okay, then that's all good.
Now, one, I mean, one of the reasons for this is, this site plan was delivered to me today. So, I wrote this in anticipation that we might not have this at the time. So, and then, this is the first time you're going to see this too because all these changes were based on discussions that we had at the hearing, so I did want to confirm that this meets your understanding of what, what the discussion was as well.
So, one of those is the white pine that...
This is the white pine.
Okay.
That's going to replace with the fourteen to sixteen.
Those are the three most...
Yeah, this is the ones we are, that are trying to be saved, that were affected by the previous grading, yeah. And the tree well is going around, and then the tree well going around this.
That's the one that I thought, hey, those two I was switching, okay.
But, so...
During the site house.
I want to drive, I want to drive.
Right here, this is the area that was flattened down, correct?
Yes.
Then, this is the retaining wall and then it drops down, correct?
Correct.
So, when you say in the second paragraph, build the property to create a level grass area behind the retaining wall, don't you really mean...
You mean like the bug?
Upgrade of the...
Above the retaining wall adjacent or...
Yeah.
On the high side.
Yeah.
Low side, a level grass layer, yeah.
The level grassed area is on... The level grassed area is on the high side of the retaining wall.
But the grassing is on the low side.
All right, everybody.
That's grassing, not grossing, right?
It's grassing, yeah.
A real much grass.
Yeah, the grassing that is controlled through drainage. Well, I think that's both.
He's rolling his eyes.
So.
I just realized I can't vote on.
The fourth.
Then went there?
No, I didn't.
All right.
Okay.
There you go.
So by the same trope in the fourth paragraph, the structure of grading behind the wall should be grading on the high side of the wall.
Yeah, this is kind of like. Nice job, you might feel like having that before.
Yeah, really. In your spare time.
Picture is worth a thousand words.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right.
This is why people draw.
So can we move through this kind of random?
Well, do we record the vote on these memos?
Oh, yeah, here it is.
Four oh, got it.
But it's.
All right.
Well, I, so can we move? Can we move?
Okay, just a few seconds.
Three seconds.
For a favor.
Aye.
Send me my own briefcase.
Four oh.
Yeah.
Willard.
Yep.
Willard is.
He printed that in the memo.
I did.
He's reading some sequences.
So under preserved natural and historic trees, we can see. It's sort of happened. We have solely in this particular instance, the board finds that the existing proposed replacement plan to be consistent with current overall neighborhood care conditions and goals. I would like to remove that and broadly supported by the neighborhood residents since that's basically the material.
It's basically what?
The material that we usually don't have. We just, we have town bylaws with the planning board of the forces.
I can understand that. The only reason I might consider this again, done learning, is that we're talking about it being consistent with the neighborhood. And in many respects, the neighborhood is changing.
Right.
A lot of the storm damage, the pine trees that came down consistently come down. Too old for problems. So the neighbors living in the neighborhood are supporting the neighborhood venue change.
But that's to me.
So I don't know, maybe it's put a different way, but I'd like to acknowledge their support of the, of the evolution of the neighborhood. If that's not appropriate here, then that's all right, but.
It really isn't. It's, I think Sue's right, it's not something that we should specifically consider.
Okay.
You know, the bylaws, black line, black letter language, boom.
Okay.
And it doesn't say unless people.
Right, no, and that, and that, I'm happy that it didn't say that, but I was kind of recognizing all of it. But if that's not appropriate, that's why, that's why you guys.
That's in the.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe there's another place to put that, because we do listen to neighborhood comments and support, but if it's in the minutes.
It is in the minutes.
Okay, but that's the way.
Yeah, that's the way you look at it.
Yeah, I agree.
In connection with that, Eli.
Yes.
I really wrestled with this one.
Yeah.
And my feeling is that we're, we're sort of handed something after the fact.
Yes.
And we're being told, okay, here it is, it's a Fedex company. Yet we're in charge with administering the zoning bylaw as it's written. And so it puts us in a conundrum. And what I would say, in my own opinion, is that in the future, I would, I would object to accepting an application for a site plan review that didn't include a photographic record of property four.
Okay.
Clearance, clearance, and a restoration plan in this middle.
Okay.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't necessarily have to be the final landscaping plan. But, but it would give the, at least the board, some, something to go by, because we had nothing to go by, nothing. What we saw was a blank slate, which was the opposite of what we saw when we reviewed the adjacent lot earlier. And so all I'm saying is, we have, we're tasked with administering the light clearance bylaw, but we can't do it if we don't have any information about what was cleared. So we need that information as part of a complete application. That would be my feeling, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but.
I agree.
Yes, it's interesting.
Yep, one more question though. Did the Google, did they apply Google for everything? Did the Google map not show us prior to the.
It did.
So we had the Google map.
So the two thousand fifteen year olds showed.
So now, I mean, whether that's sufficient or not, that's.
No, that's, that's, that's far as.
Okay.
But, but what you may not know is that it would've been directed by the land court to consider as part of our deliberations, conditions before anything happened on the site.
No, please, say, okay.
And so we've been required in this case, and this was, this was a special case. I want you to recognize that. That we were, we are required by the land court to review the conditions before anything happened on the site.
Okay.
The only way to do that is to get a record that we can, that, and it can, from three thousand feet up is not a record. And then we're, the clearance bylaw requires us to consider that, if it's cleared, to consider restoration.
Yes, I would understand why.
So that's, that's what I'm asking for. So we're not just looking at a blank slate. We're, we're looking at what we've been tasked to do, not only by the bylaw but by land court.
Okay, fair enough.
And this is, is upon the recommendation of our land site itself. This asset is sufficient.
Okay.
Right. So just for the future.
Yeah.
Those two things.
Photographic record.
And restoration. Restoration.
Moving on, next in my token is based on this house.
I want to put that under standard.
Yes.
With that, yeah, at some point. So just on the record now.
So someone that in deep preserved scenic views, it says views on thirty-seven to forty-five will be restored. Is that part of this certificate of action?
Thirty-seven is not, but it's under the same owner and has, and they have to come in for an amendment for the trees taken down on that lot.
Okay, did we want to steal, did it gain gold with some other, like we did with the earlier ones?
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. We really can't mention another lot.
Yeah, we can't, that's, that's true. I mentioned it there again because kind of what we're dealing with with the changing neighborhood character, that three lots, three contiguous lots have been affected, that they've been cleared. The subject property, the one next door to them through site plan approval, and then some. And then the lot kind of to the left of it has been cleared.
So.
And so thirty-seven and forty-five are ones we know where we have jurisdiction over it for, for review on.
But it's not part of this decision.
It is not, no, it's, it's contextual, yeah.
But, but what you're saying is that there is a, an owner, the owner continues to do things that are not followed within the jurisdiction of the zoning, as far as clearing land, of the three lots they own.
No.
One they've, they've.
They own two.
They own two. The two lots, one they went through the site, so approval process, and the other one they have.
The other one they're on now, so.
It's both of them.
I think she's misinterpreting what he said.
Yeah.
It's not being extraneous, I think. One people, one person will put one thing and the other.
Yeah. So now, yeah, I haven't seen that.
Unless you.
Or more explicit or. Yeah, that is, that, just, that needs to be proven over to that, you know.
Okay.
See, I get confused because the next one says in conjunction with fifty-two. So all of a sudden, I see three lots.
Yeah, we just shouldn't drag that. This is limited to the.
Somebody's got to study those.
Fabry's of this property.
But if there is something where they're using each lot to offset planting or drainage or something else, and it does have to be done, okay, that's one unified now.
Can't do it.
Because there was something I thought, I saw here about.
Can't, we can talk about it, you know.
Oh, because if this was cycles altering conjunction with fifty-two will to create a smooth transition in drainage pattern. To me, that says the drainage is shared by both in order to make it work. So.
Actually, yeah. I'm not even sure, I'm not sure that we should even discuss that. I mean, it doesn't matter. What we looked at, it was the final, the final result.
Yeah.
Did what, how a good result occurred.
Okay.
And so all we looked at was the, was that final grading plan.
Okay.
Doesn't make any difference to our decision how it happened.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But is it, is forty-five a standalone drainage plant?
It is now, it has.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all.
Standard one.
They're all.
It has to be.
Yeah, they used to take care of themselves.
Okay, that's what I thought, but the way this was worded, I wasn't sure if there was something else going on.
Exactly why I don't want.
Right, okay.
And also, if we can, if we look at the landscape design, we consider contiguous lots in the.
In our review.
In our review.
Right.
And when we want to protect plagues on an adjacent lot, we talk about the protection on this lot for plagues on the adjacent.
Like we just did in the oral.
Exactly.
Okay.
But to reference, outright reference.
That's where I get confused, okay. I'm a good level of confused, am I get confused?
You're a good proxy.
There you go. I'm a canary. That's cute. Canary.
Are we in the coal mine?
Yeah. Hey, wait, the coal's supposed to be good now, right?
There's a police song, Canary in a Coal Mine.
There you go. Your theme song.
I mean, you could say that something like, that the landscape, the final landscape design is coordinated with the adjacent lots or something like that.
Okay.
And just leave it at that.
Yeah.
So under half the special conditions coming. And then it's about lighting, and I notice under page six, under ten, when the glare, so you actually spell out exactly what's what, so what, at what point do those fixtures change?
All right, I can see.
Right, I can see. So they have, they have to come in and show you the.
Sure, yeah, they, give me a respec, and then when I go out there and check, then that light should be in there.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about that.
Oh, okay.
Because that's the one section. You got anything?
No, you mentioned.
Wow.
What, nothing from Steve?
Steve is shut out here.
What can I say?
He's really going to find something now, like he's looking for it.
Yeah, it must be.
Feed himself.
We put him in the fifth view now.
Good to stay.
So are we all ready?
I'm ready.
Yes, I get ready. So I'd like to move, we approve the certificate of action, our G F A site plan approval for forty-five Weller Road as amended.
Somebody second?
Second.
For a favor?
Aye.
Aye, be opposed? For a purpose, aye. All right. Okay. That's that. Next up, other business, minutes.
So minutes, Steve has reviewed the four minutes. Want to take a look at them or?
Sue hasn't reviewed the four eighteen minutes.
Because I just gave them to you yesterday, so it's not your fault.
So Steve, Steve did the four four minutes?
Yes.
That we should look at it with a very.
Fine, we'll come right now.
Be my guest. They're very long. Yes.
In that case, I hope that we approve. It's dread by.
Idle threads.
A second.
For a favor.
Very good.
Approval not required, want to go to that one?
Yeah.
Why not?
So this is just basically a land swap to adjust boundaries, I believe, of a path that's between the country club and and that private landlord. Let me see if I got these rolled in the right order. So, yeah, there it is on a large, on a large scale. So cut off A to the straight, cut off B to get to there. And then this zooms in on it, these two smaller ones zoom in on it and actually combine the parts that are taken on. So.
What are they doing?
I think it was, as Jonathan explained to me, they had a path that was running through here that was, that was encroaching.
So you're going to say a meeting in a golf course?
Yeah.
Is the square foot, is it full of concrete?
Um.
Doesn't matter, it's A and R.
Yeah, that's what we can say about it. Yeah, it does, and it just has to be conforming.
Yeah.
So, so all the setbacks want to change, but it's a lot line.
No.
And the wetland setback.
No, yeah, well, this, because this is the former lot line here, right, so this is moving now. This is the former lot line?
Yeah.
So this is moved, you know, it's moving away if anything.
There's nothing on this side.
No.
So be. Is this, is this? Is this a house?
It's a house, yeah, it's a house.
My guess is this change makes this lot a little. This is my guess.
I don't know if this is two different things.
No, so this is.
Oh, I see, this is this.
Yeah, this is this.
That's contact.
This is, this is the way the lot is.
This is the way it's proposed.
Right.
So this shows.
Whereas now, it's like this.
Yeah.
The way this is, you don't get.
The quadrangle in it?
That angle in there, that's what, that's my guess.
Did this come with the description of what at all, or they intend to?
No, it came to Jonathan talking to me about it, and what's the purpose of the country?
Jonathan White.
Pars, par, s, evil, is that?
What's the purpose of the country?
It's just informational.
Well, no, it's.
This plan is not just informational.
No, it's not just informational, so this plan cuts, creates these two little parcels. This plan joins this parcel to the country club lot.
No, he's talking about this.
Oh, the.
No, no, I wasn't.
Oh, that's.
Okay, okay, yeah, and this plan joins this little parcel to this lot, so it's three.
Okay, so I get it.
So, yeah, so this one is about this lot, this one is about the small lot, this one is about cutting the two, cutting those little pieces. Okay, this. Oh, did I put the pen down there?
I don't know.
The signing pen?
I don't think so.
Here's the signing pen.
Is that something on seventy-five Franklin, but I guess that's just a bad.
No, no, seventy-five. Oh, okay, yes. Yeah, name of surveyor is probably confined to seventy-five.
Sorry. We, we said of all?
Um, I would sign at least the Mylar and one bond of each.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, Mike, this is new to me, what exactly is happening now that's different from everything else we've done?
These, these are approval not required.
Yeah, it's, it's the most, it's the most confusing name in any zoning bylaw in the United States.
And it's called what?
It is called approval not required, yet you signed it.
Approving not required.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's.
We're acknowledging.
You're acknowledging it, so.
What if we don't sign it then?
It's automatically approved.
It's automatic, yeah, then they get.
If I sign it.
Yeah.
If you don't have, they get it through the registry and get it approved. If, if you know, if you made a legal submission, yeah, you say no. Yeah.
Do one at a time.
So.
Next?
But our approval really is required.
We're instructed.
You're on the line, literally.
I need to sign this one.
No, no, what do you want?
Okay, one at a time.
One at a time. All right. That way we get some of these papers off the table.
I'm a holder, I'll be the last.
You're a holder.
I gotta see for me.
So I'm gonna write this.
No, I'm, I'm the C.
Okay.
I need to go last, I'm always going last.
I've never seen a protest in our before this.
We have a protest. Can I have one? That way?
Yes.
And then, so here's one.
Consciousness objector status.
No, I think there's one that we didn't, we never did sign.
That is?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And then, it just.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so you don't, you don't have to sign all the bonds, I just get a Mylar and a Bond, yeah, signed.
Come on, guys.
Let's get out of here, kids.
Let's move along.
Just sign the else's name again.
We had.
Oh, yeah, I should have brought three pens down. That would have worked well.
And we would still.
Sign the rest of them?
Go, go, go.
We're just doing one at a time, side to side.
The old days when you used to sign all the paper copies on your stand?
Yeah, the old days.
Yeah, the old days.
You don't have to.
Just one, one.
One goes through the registry and then you have one, I keep as a record, because the others are just.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Next.
Grab those. Here we go again.
Again?
Oh, yeah.
You're doing three.
Two or three times.
That's what we do.
Don't book and candle.
Actually. What is this?
Why did you give us two?
My larger than this one.
Well, they're different.
Yeah. Oh, you know, this is a zoom in of this, that's what that says. This is the same cut out, but this is a zoom in of that larger class.
But there's only one copy of this. No, there's, oh, there's multiple comes to this, oh.
Yeah, there's one copies of both.
Okay.
Oh, he has one eye.
Four on that one.
Yeah.
That one needs four, seven, two. Well, because there's.
There are two different sheets.
There's two different sheets, one, it's at two different scales. And then there's just one, two. And then there's that one, that one's just two.
Excellent.
Just the bond copy.
No, that's not what I, I didn't mean that.
Next.
Hope it's not going wrong now, please. We use cell for instance, Tom. Full DNA.
I like that.
You guys give me the creepy chair on purpose? I figured as much. I'll have to get early on something.
That's right, you're the green one, that's it.
That's it, always. That it?
Guys?
Nope. I think there's one more to go.
Yeah, there's one more.
Sue.
Sue.
Speed rating.
It's amazing how you handle it. It's very important. Okay, one more step to go.
Amazing how you handle it.
And we can see. No, I was going, I was going, um, I was, um, I remember, it was my classmate that talked, she was trying to change it, and I did it there, okay, she did a residential parking study that found that most sites are over parked, most residential, you know, over parked, so.
These are over parked, meaning too many parking spaces are provided for parking cars?
Yeah. Do you have any parking?
Just go over to Boston, um, one thirty-three Boston Post Road sometime.
What's that?
No, I'm.
There we have it.
I'm saying, let our best practice.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'll reach out to her and, um, I'll reach out to Alan, Allison, she looks at, she's a transportation planner, she does.
Right.
She does.
And I know, basically, you know, since a permanent architecture, you've done a lot of people in the field.
Do they say here and a lot of me here?
We have a lot of people in the field that are not really the owners.
But, you know, we don't know.
No, not, you, you would like, on like local services and like a certain amount of people that's going to take out of cars. Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna have hands.
So, but they should be able to.
No, I don't, I don't agree there at that, that level yet, I think they have rules of like traffic production, um, but how to do it, or how to build it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I think they have one.
But it's scary when it's all sudden, you know, who's quarantined, you're lining three seventies.
She's, she's.
Or whatever.
Perfect.
Is that a great? Ready, what?
That's it, right, just two? Yeah, there we go.
Ta-da.
Are we all good on this one?
Yep.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Let me present you with.
What do you think, we're finishing up?
I think that.
Town plan report.
Town plan report, no.
All right, that too. There you go, called bandit, right?
Okay, so here's what I want to hit on that. So upcoming meetings, site visits for one oh four Meadowbrook and three Sunday Woods on the twenty-sixth, so one oh four Meadowbrook, we are doing first, eight o'clock, July tenth, ninety-eight Love Lane, there will be a site visit for that, that's a two lot flexible subdivision, and then our next meeting on July eleventh.
Sorry, when was the one on Love Lane?
July tenth.
It's eight o'clock?
That's an eight o'clock, yes.
That's not A and R?
No, because it, it wouldn't meet.
Frontage?
It wouldn't meet frontage standards, yeah.
Huh. So that's a special permit?
So that's a special permit, yeah.
No.
Yeah. One oh one Concord, they have asked to replace this tree. I believe we've sent this around some, and at first I thought this tree was, was damaged due to construction, but Kim has gone out and taken a closer look at it, and she's concluded that it has been in decline for some time. Nonetheless, they did put it on their plans as something to be saved, and so they are now going to replace it with a forty-five inch Acer Ruben, which is a red oak?
Uh, no, red maple.
Red maple, okay. So Kim has reviewed.
That's not that big hunk of maple up on the rise.
No, no, that, that's front, either toward the front.
No, this is, this is from the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty-five inch calipers, that, that's a pretty good sized tree.
Yeah, so Kim has reviewed this, she's okay with it, and going over it, the last thing I just, I drafted a memo for it that I want you folks to take a look at. This one's pretty simple.
How large does that grow?
Oh, maybe?
Yeah, well, is that a thirty footer or is that a sixty footer?
I don't, I don't know. Fifty, sixty, it's a red maple.
Okay, I see, that's, all right.
It's not a Acer maple?
No, it's not a Japanese maple.
Right, it's, it's.
When was this?
It's been three years.
Um, we did this like, I did it in February, I think.
It does have red leaves.
In fall.
Oh, but not normally, okay, so it's not robed in the.
Yeah, no, we're thinking of like, um, the crimson.
Oh, it's just, oh, this is a three lot thing.
Yeah, this is a three lots of the.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. When are they going to replace it, at the very end?
I would think they would do it at the end.
Yeah.
Now is not the time to put a new tree in.
Well, because it's still being constructed, that's what.
More than that, they're terribly difficult to.
Sometime, yeah.
So they'll put it in cold leaves in September, October, because that's, that's the second house right now, that's the rear house.
Can we, can we target this fall, I mean, can we save?
Well, they have to do a prior occupancy.
Okay.
This, this would be, I mean, this comes up with basically now as an amendment to, to the site plan, they have to complete all those conditions prior to occupancy, or they would have to bond for this, this particular tree, but I don't think they're going to want to bond this, and particularly since this one is going to be sold, I, I would be worried about allowing a bond on this too, because I don't want to chase a subsequent owner to put that in.
Aren't they, are the other one being sold, is that the difference? You said this one is going to be sold, does that mean the other one?
The other one is going to be sold too.
Okay, so they both, that's my thought.
They're both coming under a break, right, Sue, I mean.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
It's got to be.
They're, they're pretty far along in that.
Yeah, they're pretty far along too. And I, I don't mean by like going to be sold, I mean, that's just the plan for these, these are site houses.
Yeah, oh, yeah, although boy, aware of that.
Is this an amendment to the site plan approval or to this flexible subdivision?
It's an amendment to the site plan approval.
Okay, so then in the second to last paragraph, you say, and the special permit approval for the flexible subdivision.
Yes, because, I say that because the special permit approval for flexible subdivision lays out criteria for site plan approval for each individual house.
So you're saying conformance is there for category, and the special?
And the special permit, yeah, that's it.
Is it? Anything substantial?
That there is no real leader of the band, that since the committee for the case of taking this ban during its piecemeal overview and supervision, which is very, there seems to be leftovers in place like Michael Tarrity, who is still partaking of it, but I'm not sure who or how, even reports, Concom seems to have some oversight.
So it is substantial.
Yeah.
Okay, the only reason why I'm asking is because I think if, if we're going to get into issues like that, we probably ought to put it on the agenda.
Well, he thought we'd put it under the.
Under.
E-Mine to bring up, because it was.
By his report?
Yeah.
Okay. But is it, is it scheduled in your, I don't know why we're looking at a lot of plans, is it scheduled in your thing anywhere?
It's on my town plan to report.
It is, where is it?
Ash Street sidewalks.
That, okay, got it.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at it in a minute.
Right.
Comments on this first, this is where we were.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, Sue.
Everybody done, or no?
So everyone's okay with?
With the removal, changing of this site plan.
The only thing I would say is it should say forty-five inch caliber.
Okay. You get a little forty-five inch tree, you get baby root over there?
I move that we approve the certificate of action for flexible subdivision site plan approval amendment for one oh one Concord Road Lot Three with modifications noted.
Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
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 Little pose. Now, here we go.
We don't, I can cut to the chase on this fairly quickly, I'll put these in here in case anybody wanted to get an understanding of what it's for. No one could go, neither E-Mine nor Tony could go on the walk, so I attended, um, the back in the middle of June, and what they've done is they've combined the Ash Street sidewalk plans and planning with the legacy trail and the connector, so it's all falling now, this is, as I understand, under one contract with a company, where the consultant is. So it's all falling now, this is, as I understand, under one, um, contract with a company where the consultant is, oh, what is it? HSH. Um, so we took a walk and there was members from the CPC, the sidewalk committee, legal voting voters, um, tree advisory group. I was planning board, Steve Fogg was there, the whole, a lot of other people, hopefully show up on the website soon. Plans we looked at were from the sidewalk, which were about a year old, and they were the goal, I believe, he was upon the plan. As it's now getting coordinated with the legacy plan, things are changing. But again, the plans, I've been able to find are the hand drawn Tom Worth plans. So it's, it's a little bit bubbling, as far as I can tell, maybe there is a plan out there, a plan that's coming that holds it all together. I haven't seen it. We also then kind of walked up to the back of the, um, new field school parking lot to do, go up the back trail through the piney woods, the rhododendron forest and over to the summer house. Um, that's all the AUL activity limited, so thank you. But the bottom line is there were a lot of different opinions being voiced and depending on who it was, people listened or didn't listen, and it was unclear if there was a single entity that was speaking with, I don't know, with authority is the right word, but speaking in an integrated manner.
Who's making the decision?
Right, and it's unclear.
No, I mean...
Oh, well, we had some, we had some voices there, Michael Harity had a voice, you know, sidewalk people had a voice, questions.
But this is the final arbiter.
That's what's unclear, that's why I'm bringing this to the planning board. I don't know, because I would like to make the suggestion that selectmen be, enact some sort of an oversight committee to deal with this. They had said Concom is gonna be responsible for maintenance. Well, my understanding right now is that they only have enough money in their budget to move the place one more time. You know, they've been moving, somebody has been moving giant bulkers out of the past year because it's hard to mow around. Again, I'm hearing this very head, why is the money going in there? So there needs to be a single point clearinghouse and direction and unified effort. You know, everybody has a piece of it, but nobody's acting in unison. So that's why I bring it to the planning board and say, where can we go from here?
Because after the last, I assumed traffic sidewalks and...
They are...
The people, they're both presenting with funds and things like that, but I, I realize the case is...
But the case is, it's now, it's, I understand, a part of it, and that's a legacy trail, and then there's maintenance, you know, as far as Concom. And when I talked to, it was Emily, who's the Concom coordinator, um, she was pleading, there was, you know, they're just like, it's a lot of this, or who has the last word, or, you know, you hold it up to so and so, or I thought it was this plan. So, yeah.
So where you suggest that the planning board send a recommendation?
Or ask for request for how this is to proceed and if not, make a recommendation that there is a planning entity that has some kind of public transparency? Because there was a discussion of what material should the trail be made of, well, it's sidewalk asphalt. But then when the discussion was, well, it's going across now behind the stone wall on, on the case states to the meadows, Concom came up, oh, it has continuous asphalt, no, stop. It doesn't. And at that point, the consultant said, oh yes, we're still trying to figure out what we can make it to make it a softer, more organic, but still accessible material. So that's still being investigated.
Who's the consultant working for?
Um, I believe they're answering to the sidewalk, uh...
Traffic side?
Right.
Because wasn't that the person who we actually, when we had a discussion, we were talking sidewalk and we talked about material? And someone in the...
Like a caselayer?
It was mostly for the Ash Street sidewalks.
Ash Street sidewalks?
At that point, they didn't have anything to do with the legacy.
Right, but they come up and say this.
Okay, CPC, yes, I think, and I think Nina probably brought it up and said something about the same, the same condition. And then we get into some very interesting things when you go through piney woods and you're in piney woods and the rhododendron forest, it's an existing trail there. That trail is too steep and too many woods to be accessible. Well, you then start zigzagging accessible trail and there go the piney woods. You know, so there's a lot of, the first half is great, it's all been done, but now we're getting down to the more nitty gritty. And they're talking about having plans completed by the summer, I think, it's in, it's in the notes I gave, I didn't...
You mean tomorrow?
Well, end of July, something like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, but, so, you know, I think it was a twenty-five percent complete, so maybe there's a point at which people look at it. I'm just putting up a flag saying doesn't, for all the careful examination and thoughtfulness that was put into it, I think it should continue, I don't see it right now.
Do you know that traffic sidewalks are not feeling charged?
No. No, I don't know that.
That they're in charge?
I do know that when we talk about the legacy trail in the past year and all of that, everybody turned to Concom and said, well, they're the ones who were possible for maintaining it in a certain fashion, X, Y, Z.
Always there with traffic sidewalks.
Clint, yeah, Clint, yeah.
Maybe it's a memo to selectmen asking for clarification on, as an organization relating to the legacy trails, so that we know who's who. You know, some sort of a description of the cast of characters or...
Organization chart or something.
Yeah. Just out of, just a question of curiosity, would, we just would like to know...
You would be helpful.
For clarification.
Yeah. So, maybe who are the, one paragraph memo saying, we'd like to get some information on how it's organized? Just for our notifications. Ordinary taxpayers.
Right, well, they're also talking about a different place to break through, still a wall, fees to come down, it'd be nice to know who we're supposed to report it to.
Well, if it's in the right of way.
Right, I know that's our purview.
Yeah.
Like coordinate our purview with everybody else.
Yeah. Right. So would that be okay?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay?
It was a lovely walk, actually. No, I'm really...
No, asphalt sidewalks across fields. Anything else? Nope, that is it, that is it, that is it for tonight. Thank you, John.
Second, I wanna say...
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice.